The Gladstone City Council will now meet in executive session pursuant to ORS 192.6602D to conduct deliberations with persons designated by the governing body to carry on labor negotiations. Recognized representatives of the news media and council authorized staff members may attend the executive session. All other persons must leave the room and are respectfully requested to do so now. Members of the media are specifically directed not to report on the topics discussed and the deliberations that occur during the executive session. City councilors are similarly reminded not to discuss executive session topics and deliberations with any third party. This includes without limitation, family members, other appointed officials, city staff and volunteers, members of the public and members of the media. The presence of the media while the city's legal council is discussing matters with the council is not intended to nor does it waive the attorney-client privilege that attaches to those communications and any related documentation. If a final decision on any matter is necessary, the council will make that decision when it is in a regular session. Thank you very much. I call the order of the Gladstone City Council meeting for February 8th, 2022 at 6:30 PM for the Governor's Executive Order 20-16 regarding compliance with Oregon's public meeting laws. The city of Gladstone is abiding by social distancing requirements during the coronavirus pandemic. Because of the surge in COVID numbers, the city council meeting will be conducted using the Zoom platform. The council members and staff will be shown as panelists and those watching the meeting will be attendees. The Zoom access instructions can be found on the meeting agenda. Members of the city council, staff and the public all have access to this call. Public comment requests were accepted prior to meeting today and were to include your topic and phone number. Tonight, we will start with the presentation and Q and A from the Oregon Department of Transportation, also referred to as ODOT regarding the I-205 tolling project, followed by the consent agenda, which includes approval of the December 15th, 2021 and January 11th, 2022 minutes, approval of the December bank balances, budget report for periods ending December 31st, 2021, approval of the December check register, legal costs on projects, department head monthly reports for January 2022, approval of the intergovernmental agreement, also referred to as an IGA between Water and Environmental Services, which is referred to as WES, and the city of Gladstone for regional inflow and infiltration reduction, award a contract to Deacon Construction LLC in the amount of $250,726.30 for the Gladstone Fire Department remodel, approval of the crack seal machine purchase for the public work street maintenance projects. Our regular meeting agenda includes item 12, which is the 2020-2021 Annual Financial Statements Fiscal Audit. Item number 11 will be the Urban Renewal Agency Meeting, approval of the June 22nd, 2021 Urban Renewal Agency Meeting Minutes. Item 12 will also be in the Urban Renewal Agency Meeting, review of the Annual Financial Statements Fiscal Audit. Item 13, we will reconvene to our regular meeting and will discuss the Gladstone Library update and annual report. Item 14 is approval of the lease agreement with Plaquemines County for the new library, which is to be located at 525 Portland Avenue. Item 15, which is Resolution 1204, reimbursement of expenditures prior to issuance of the obligations from proceeds to tax-exempt obligations for new public works facility. Item 16 will be a public hearing to consider approving Resolution 1205, the supplemental budget. Tammy, could you please call the roll?
Counselor Ripley.
Yes.
Counselor Alexander.
Yes.
Counselor Tracy.
Present.
Counselor Hartman.
Hi.
Counselor Todd.
Here.
Counselor Gollington.
Here.
Mayor Stempel.
Yes. Could everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. So we're going to begin with the presentation from Oregon Department of Transportation. And if you all could please hold your questions until the end, where we're going to have about a 15-minute opportunity to ask questions. Staff?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Tonight, we have Garrett Pryor and Della Mosher that are going to go through a presentation on the I-205 improvements project and also the toll projects. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and hand it over to Garrett and Della.
Okay, good evening. Thank you, Della Mosher. Good to see you all here. Just want to make sure Garrett has made it over. I'm not seeing him on the panel here.
He should be coming over.
Right. We should have staff that is able to bring up our presentation to get us started. Looks like Rebecca is here.
And Rebecca, I'll be making you a co-host.
Great, thank you.
All right, and Garrett just messaged me. He's having trouble getting on with his computer. We've all been through that. So I'll go ahead and get started and leave it to Garrett once he gets here to see if he makes it, and if not, we'll carry on. So thank you again for having us tonight to talk about the I-205 roadway improvements and the I-205 toll project updates. We greatly appreciate the chance to spend time with you here talking about some of the biggest investment opportunities in the Portland metro area that we have had really in decades. My name for the record is Della Mosher. I'm the Deputy Director of ODOT's Urban Mobility Office. And Garrett Pryor will be joining me shortly, and he is the Toll Policy Manager for our group. Next slide, please. This photo here depicts what the lack of investment has created for all of us, sitting in hours of congestion, dealing with safety issues due to crashes and a general inability to get to the places we need to get to in a reliable way. Next slide. In response to these challenges, under the direction from the Oregon Transportation Commission, we developed the urban mobility strategy for the Portland metro area. And on this slide, you can see six key projects and programs that were identified as part of the comprehensive solution to addressing congestion in the Portland metro region. Next slide, please. These projects are meant not to just push bottlenecks around, but to manage congestion comprehensively while meeting our climate goals and incorporating equity along the way. Managing congestion comprehensively includes investments and walking and rolling facilities, as well as partnering with transit providers and others to provide improvements to transit and multimodal options to complement the freeway and interstate improvements. Of the six projects on this slide, Oregon 217 out in the west is the first to go to construction. ODOT has also advertised for bid the first phase of the I-205 improvements project, which is Phase 1A, and it includes the Abernathy Bridge and adjacent interchanges. And that work is scheduled to start construction in just a few months. And you should see equipment moving around this summer. Next slide, please. The 205 improvements project focuses on the seven miles of 205 between Stafford Road and OR 213. The project will include adding the missing third line in each direction, as well as the Abernathy portion I just mentioned. It will also create a seven-mile-long earthquake-ready corridor by replacing or repairing eight other bridges to meet modern earthquake standards. Total cost for these seven miles of improvements is estimated to be around $700 million. And tolling is expected to provide a significant part of the funding for this program. Next slide. We also want to share the phase of this project that is closest to your community in Gladstone. And these are the improvements that are north and east of the Abernathy Bridge. These improvements will extend, eventually extend to Oregon 213 and should provide operational and safety improvements adjacent to the seismically resilient bridge. Next slide, please. As I mentioned, delivering a comprehensive approach to getting ourselves out of congestion in the Portland metro area requires investment. The legislature has provided for tolls to be a significant part of the path forward for the I-205 improvements project. How we develop the toll program, however, as an Oregon toll program, is not yet defined. This is the work that is in front of all of us, the leaders here that we have the chance to talk with today, as well as our community members and folks that are using our facilities. And I'll just check here to see if Garrett's made his way in.
He made it here, Della.
All right, good deal, Garrett. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Garrett to talk, take us through what is really involved in developing a toll program that works for Oregonians. Go ahead, Garrett.
Oh, thank you so much. And yeah, Mayor Stempel and members of the council, it's great to be here. Sad we couldn't meet in person. I was looking forward to Chick-fil-A dinner and then showing up to the meeting tonight, so I'll have to do that again in the future. But if we could go to the next slide. This is one of my favorite pictures. So I lived in Richmond, Virginia, and they had the old coin bucket tolling, and the worst-case scenario is the combination of high humidity and heat, and you're trying to make it to daycare before it closes to pick up your kids. So I'm glad that this tolling system will have no part of that. It'll be all electronic, all lanes, no stopping. It'll pick you up a little transponder on your car, a little sticker like you see there. And I think as technology progresses, you'll get it even to where it's an app on your phone or something even more, you know, to where you don't have to actually keep that thing taped up on your windshield itself. But that's how the system will look and operate once it's in place. Next slide. We are studying this in two steps. And so you might be thinking, well, why was this 205 segment kind of picked out to go first? And so that's partly driven by what Della was saying. Our ability to meet the construction schedule, to get the Abernathy Bridge, to get those I-205 improvements to you as soon as possible. There was also a big regional group called, through a process called the Value Pricing Feasibility Analysis, that looked at this segment of I-205 and then another segment of I-5 as kind of the first steps before we launch into a regional system. So the earliest that tolling would start on the I-205 segment, where we're looking would be a toll gantry around the Abernathy Bridge and then one on the Twolton River Bridge, would be in 2024. And we're in the middle of what's called an environmental review process now, and we're working towards a really important spot on this, that circle, that yellow circle you see there. And in the next slide, I'm going to walk through the amount of information that we're going to bring back on what we're studying and what kind of impacts we've seen, but also what is ODOT bringing to the table as far as mitigation and commitments and improvements that are beyond just delivering the highway improvements? So that could be improvements to local roads or other types of transportation options to help mitigate those impacts of tolling. Now, the Regional Mobility Pricing Project, basically the rest of I-205 and then all of I-5 between the Boone Bridge and then the Interstate Bridge project up there on the Columbia River, that would come onboard just a year later. And so that similarly is at its beginning, kind of its process. It'll go through this in-depth environmental review. And then for each one of these, they go through a year to year and a half of toll rate setting. And so that's a similar process where we'll be coming back to you and then a more fine tune, looking at what would the toll rates be? What would the oversight system be? How would we monitor this long time to make sure that we don't just set tolls and then forget to come back to the community or talk about that? These are all key questions we'll be working through in that 2023 and 2024 timeframe. Next slide. So what will you be seeing this summer? You'll be seeing information on travel time, not just on the highway, but local roads. Our information on diversion and not just what the transportation models, but what actually real people say about the impact to their community, the impact to safety, freight, climate and air quality, which is a key thing, especially like in communities like yourselves that are close to the highway. Impacts to businesses, an economic analysis that we'll look at, the estimated toll rates and revenues for the project, impact to low-income populations, impact to sound from the highway, and equity impacts that kind of go along, just looking at income, but looking at a bunch of different groups like seniors and youth and people with limited or no English proficiency or people living with a disability. Next slide. And so what you're going to hear, see here and what's kind of been around in the community and some of our kind of roadshow that we've been doing, some of the very early transportation information on the highway and kind of the benefits and the changes in mobility we're seeing there. But we're looking at that between the 82nd intersection, 82nd and I-205, and then down to the I-5 split. We'll be looking at a whole number of local roads that you see kind of within that purple. You know, what kind of animal is that? Maybe like a backwards camel. But we'll be looking at all the local roads that are within there, specifically 99E, Highway 43, Borland Road and Lamont Falls Drive, over 50 local intersections, which I believe four of those or three of those are within Gladstone. And then not just looking at this for cars, but car, freight, transit, bike and walk. Next slide. This is an intersection that's come up before in our conversations with you all and City Manager Beth. She's been doing a good job of staying connected in the project. And that's Arlington Street, McLaughlin Boulevard and River Road. And we know today, if we do nothing and as we look out into the future, the intersection exceeds the mobility standards. That's kind of how you measure, especially even in your local transportation system plan, kind of the health of an intersection. We're continuing to study to see how tolling would impact that. Just from some of the early numbers, we're seeing a very, a little change as far as like the number of cars over the whole 99E corridor in this section. But we're looking at that, maybe there might be some differences once we get down to the intersection level. And you'll see in our summer report that June, July, when we released that draft environmental assessment, you know, what those impacts are, and if there are impacts, what would ODOT do to address that? And know that you're not just seeing this through the tolling project. We're also working with the other parts of ODOT and how ODOT in general can bring funding. And I know this intersection was specifically in state transportation planning. They do it in three-year increments. They're now planning for the ODOT investments in 2024 to 2027. This intersection was on what's called 150% list. They're now looking at it, should they move it up into the 100% list, meaning it would get funded for construction, and that will be coming out later this year. Some of the ODOT staff is working on that. And so we can, again, if you want a follow-up on that, we can connect you and with the folks on who are tracking this intersection through that process. Next slide. We know there's a lot of issues on this project, and we're not going to solve them alone. So I'll walk through some of the key issues we're working to address. And this is where we'd really love to hear from you all, if these are the key issues we should be working on. And if you have any ideas how to solve those, we would love to hear from that. So we're hearing about how can we better connect the regional work with what's going on at I-205? Because we have the same concern. We want to see the regional congestion pricing work. We don't want this segment of I-205 to kind of be left alone if that regional work doesn't pass. We're very concerned about equity impacts specifically to low income and how these toll projects impact climate. We want this work to support transit, multimodal transportation options, especially in areas like this area, the I-205 area in Gladstone, where those transportation options can be limited or non-existent. We want to look at addressing the short-term impacts of diversion, but also once the tolls are in place, what is that long-term commitment for mitigation and diversion? Or what are we doing to monitor this once that does happen? And then as we're, there's a lot of decisions between now and 2024. So how do we make sure we're including Gladstone and other local and regional voices in on some of these state decisions that have to happen? Next slide. So what's next? Again, like I said, we're here tonight to gather, what are some of those key issues? And how might we address them? We have some deeper dives into that transportation and modeling analysis information that are happening. We're calling diversion webinars on February 15th and 16th. We'll be sure to send that information around. So we'd love to help sharing that through your networks. In April and May, we'll come back to get feedback on that larger tolling congestion pricing system called the Regional Mobility Pricing Project. And then this summer, when we had that big kind of draft, all those different boxes that I talked about before, when we have that draft environmental assessment, we'll come back to get your feedback on, you know, did we get the impacts right? And are we coming to the table with the right mitigation, with the right solutions to those problems? Next slide. So, Della, we can kick it back to you, or I'll read off these questions here. We would love to, you know, you probably have some ideas or questions you've been hearing about from the community, but we would love also to get feedback on how do you think a better managed, less congestion I-205 would affect Gladstone? What are some of the ideas that you have to address those key issues that we raised up, and are there ones that we missed? And then going forward, how can we best work with you to let people in Gladstone know about upcoming decisions and opportunity for input on tolling? And lastly, we've been mentioned with City Manager Beth around a possible Gladstone tolling town hall. And we're interested in supporting whatever's needed for that, to help you out with that. So. I believe that's our presentation. So we'll kick it back to you, Mayor, for any discussion. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. So I'm sure that we all have questions. We'll see how long this is going to take. I think we have about 15 minutes set aside for this. So I'd like to give everybody a chance to ask a question, starting with Counselor Alexander.
Okay, yeah, I've sat in on a couple of your meetings, you know, two hours, three hours, and listened what's going on. So I just got to ask, so you're going to toll us at the Abernathy Bridge? And then you said the Twolton River Bridge. Is there going to be another separate toll there? Is that the plan?
I can answer that. And I'm just wondering, Rebecca, if you could go back one slide as well, just to have the conversation questions. But yeah, so the plan is on the I-205 corridor where the improvements are going to likely put gantries on the Abernathy Bridge and Twolton River Bridge. But those gantries would be set up to be for compatible with the Regional Mobility Pricing Project and part of the bigger system as that comes online. So if you were, once the RMPP comes online and you're driving from, let's say, I-5 down to or just, let's just say Gladstone to Wilsonville, and you take 205, you would pay for the trip you take. So you would pay for a certain toll for the types of congestion times that you're driving perhaps, the tolls that pay for the bridges, and then tolls for other times in congestion once the RMPP sets up. Your experience, however, would be that you are paying for the trip you take. You just get one toll. All of the financing is taken care of on the backside of all that work. So the money that's owed to the construction improvements would go to pay first and foremost for those cut construction improvements. Other areas that you travel on would be paid for related to congestion pricing goals or other policy decisions that are yet to come. So it would be, you wouldn't, you know, have five bills or be paying a price for areas that you didn't travel. For instance, you wouldn't be paying a toll for Interstate Bridge if you were taking that trip because you wouldn't be crossing over the Interstate Bridge. Does that?
Well, so the congestion pricing is going to be up to you guys anyway. I mean, you're going to, you're going to, you know, say, this is what it costs. You know, so you pay two. So you're saying you go over, you're coming, you're coming from Oregon City and you go over Abernathy, and then you're going to get charged again, or you're not, or it's just depending on what time you go over the Twolton River. You know, I mean, this is all, it's all murky, I believe, is what I'm saying. You know, I mean, you don't have anything set up that says you're going to get paid this. And my other concern is, you say there'll be censors on those ganries that will be will be getting, you know, a sticker in your window or whatever. And so I want to know about the low-income families and how, you know, do they get a different sensor? How are we going to help them that, you know, are barely, people are barely making it now? And then, you know, we're going to charge them to go over the Twolton River, the Lamont River. It just doesn't seem right or fair. And so I didn't. And used a lot of, you know, RRP and stuff in there. I didn't get or understand. So the question was, you will be charged to go over both rivers? Is that, that's what I was asking.
You'll be, yeah, in the I-205 corridor, there will be ganries on the bridges to charge for the improvements for the seven-mile construction project. And we share your concerns about making this a facility, a transportation system that's possible. So for folks that can't pay and need to be able to get to work or jobs and use their single occupancy vehicles to do that due to a lack of transit options or other challenges that we hope to address in the coming numerous years. We do have a plan and a way to talk about that. So I'll turn to Garrett to talk a little bit about the low-income toll report that we have due to legislature. That is another one of our key deliverables this year. And I will also just point out that the decisions around how much can the price will be for congestion pricing and those sorts of topics are policy decisions that we will be soliciting your input on. So the part of making this a toll program that's for Oregonians and not just a toll program, a big part of that is ensuring that we're getting your input and guidance along the way over the next few years before we actually start collecting one single penny. We want to make sure we set this up to be equitable, to make sense. I think the final piece I'll add there is, is as you're taking these trips in the future, when the RMPP or the regional toll system is set up, you would know what the price is before you started that trip. So there wouldn't be any, once you're on the facility surprise or gosh, I had no idea what the price would be for this trip after I took it, that sort of thing. That can happen for some folks. So with that, Garrett, maybe you can talk a little bit about our work with the low-income toll report.
Yeah, yeah, I'll quickly. And I agree, Counselor, it's hard to talk about this without knowing the cost of the toll because it's really hard to waive benefits. And so that's that June-July timeframe. That's when we'll start sharing those numbers. And so I think that's going to help the conversation there. And so right around in that, because I'll be managing the low-income toll report to help, to your point, like what are the answers? What's the income threshold where somebody would get an exemption or discount? What would that exemption or discount be? What are things outside of just like how much the system costs? Like, could there be a cash-based option for people who don't use banking systems? Could there be work with ODOT and community organizations who make sure we actually get to the low-income populations that we want to set up the program for? We'll be working through those questions. That's probably in that like March-April timeframe. We'll come out with some options to get feedback on. And then in that June-July-August timeframe, because we're due a report by September of this year back to the legislature on what ODOT is going to do for low-income impacts, you'll see kind of the ODOT recommendations on what options we think should be provided with tolling to address that low-income piece kind of systemically.
Okay.
Just quickly, yeah, sorry, go ahead.
I want to make sure that we all have a chance to ask a question. So.
Right, I said one more quick one at the end. I mean, I have a lot because.
Okay, can I go to, Counselor Alexander, let me go to the other counselors first, and then I'll bring in secondary questions. Counselor Todd.
Hi there. I'm looking at the discussion questions specifically and going to sort of echo a little bit what Counselor Alexander said. I feel like I've been watching this, and I'm confused by what it's going to look like. And I know that's because a lot of things aren't pinned down. I think, I mean, when you say, how do you think a better managed congestion on I-205 will affect Gladstone? I don't know. How do you think it's going to affect Gladstone? You know what I mean? I know what I could guess if people are trying to dodge tolls. But what do you think is it'll look like for Gladstone if we have a better managed congestion on I-205? I don't know what it looks like. You know what I mean? Because I don't know what it's going to cost. I don't know what people are going to be doing. I think first and foremost, there just, there really has to be the town hall meetings with the actual people who do it. Everybody in this town knows I have a one-block commute. So, you know, it doesn't, I don't know what that looks like for other people. And I don't, I, and not knowing what it's going to cost because we don't know what it's going to cost. So it's a hard discussion question. So that's just where I go with it. I heard something that I did have. I heard something that I did have a question about. So is there any difference in pricing? If it's like a, a high occupancy vehicle, that sort of a thing? Or, I mean, are there HOV lanes involved with this? Or?
Good question. So we, we studied, we looked at, could in the Portland region, could you somehow like do a separated HOV lane from like general travel lanes? And when we looked at it a couple of years, and then we reviewed this with like the region, uh, we just saw that the, the geographic, like the spacing within Portland, it was difficult, if not impossible, to do the cost to physically separate out a lane and then, uh, and kind of widen the highway in areas. Um, was just not palatable, or, or people, you know, people didn't want to take on for the benefit. So, um, what you'll see in the draft environmental analysis that's coming out in June and July, it doesn't have any assumptions or discounts for high occupancy vehicles, but that is something we're looking into. Uh, just because in these environmental documents, you want to try to show what's most impactful. Um, so you can make sure that's all disclosed, and then you work on lessening those impacts from there. Uh, so that is one of those options we'll be looking at on like, is there, uh, um, you know, a discount or a rate reduced or something like that for HOV? Um, cause that is one of the, the kind of shifts that you're hoping to encourage with pricing is, is to have fewer people in single occupancy vehicles and thus making it a more kind of efficient travel for people who, who can have that option, you know, in their life.
Okay, so it's still, it's all sort of the questioning going on.
Yeah, still the questioning, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Garland.
I'm here. Okay, so, um, on page eight of your, uh, presentation, you have what looks like a simple bar that goes over the top of the freeway and it takes a photo, it hits your, your pass and, and/or sends you a bill. I totally understand how this works. So I'm one of those people that, uh, I drive from here to past Washington Square. So I'm living in the two seventeen nightmare right now. Um, I lived through the Oregon City Bridge redo nightmare for, I don't know, I think that was three years trying to commute back and forth to work. And this is just simply, I understand that my choice to live here in Gladstone and I have a job somewhere else. And the backstory to that is I've worked the same job for thirty years and they happened to move around and I've stayed where I was. So. Uh, I want to know a couple of things because I'm not opposed to tolls completely. I understand that they, uh, they, they pay for a need. You know, we all want to be able to drive down the freeway and nobody wants their car to hit a pothole and all of that kind of stuff. And this is even greater than a pothole. I understand that. My question is, why two oh five? We have sat through traffic, us Oregonians on I five, watching I five be torn apart for, I don't know, the better part of twenty years. And nobody ever thought to do that bridge or that stretch of the road from Portland past Salem. Um, the interstate bridge was a gigantic failure with huge amounts of money and nobody decided just to put the darn bridge up and start paying people, start making people pay to get across that bridge. So I kind of feel like we're trying also to pay back for that humongous failure. And then as far as the Gladstone congestion goes, I believe that if a toll was put up, that it would probably take a couple of years for people to realize that they're in their best interest just to move on the freeway and pay the couple of dollars and keep moving forward. Unfortunately, lots of things can happen in a couple of years. Accidents, a child gets hit. Somebody walking across the street, our little corridor at the eighty second drive where we meet it, or where Safeway comes in from Arlington to eighty second drive. That's a really busy area. So I think that that can't be overlooked either. But my biggest concern is, why can't you put those bars up on every freeway and turn the light on, on the same day for everybody? Why us? Why Gladstone? Why Westland? What makes ODOT think that we should be the only people paying for it? And I know that you've got a plan to go two or three years down the line. My question is, why can't it all be done fair and equitable to everyone at one time? And that's all be quiet.
Thank you, counselor. And, and I'll be happy to take this one. I apologize for my video going on and off. My, my fancy camera has broken, so I'm back to my other camera. So hopefully you can see me. Um, but I, I'll say, the reason that two oh five is going first is really goes back to the state legislature passing House Bill twenty seventeen where funding was provided to construct Oregon two seventeen in the Rose Quarter. I think it's our, one of, one of our slides talks about those two bills. The House Bill twenty seventeen and shows what was actually funded for construction, I think in, in hot pink or something like that. And so, um, since that bill was passed in twenty seventeen, there was a note that the two oh five corridor, this particular corridor was critical and was a really important route for Oregon and for the country, as well as, um, to provide improvements for quality of life for, uh, Oregonians and the communities around it. Um, however, again, money wasn't, wasn't provided. Um, the ODOT staff have applied for um, federal grants, um, on numerous, on a few, more than a few occasions. Um, and we were not in partnership with Oregon City and Clackamas County and others. Um, and we're not successful in those applications. Knowing that now, um, we're looking at nearly five years, uh, since House Bill twenty seventeen has been passed. Um, the agency is looking to move forward and, um, show progress, just like the Oregon two seventeen construction starting in the summer. And, and would like to start the construction of the two oh five project. Um, however, since funding, different funding sources haven't been identified. Um, the plan is to move forward, um, to provide this project sooner, um, with the tools that are provided. And, and so I also note that we understand the concern about, since, you know, singling out this part of the region to pay tolls initially. Um, and so we are accelerating the regional tolling program to start just a year later. Um, and part of that is because it's, it's not, it, it requires, um, a much broader part and a lot more work to do with a lot of additional communities before we can implement that work and do it in a way that's equitable and makes sense for the communities, um, that are gonna be impacted by that. Um, what I will offer is that, again, it, it's going first because it's getting the project first um, from toll revenue. And, and so that's why we're here is to, to show progress ahead of the day that we collect that first dollar. Um, but to also ensure that, um, this sort of toll program helps inform the, the broader regional mobility, um, toll program. And that, um, we're set up to create a really comprehensive and consistent seamless sort of toll program that works for everyone as we go forward. So in short, it really is because, um, this area is getting this three hundred and fifty million dollar construction project this summer rather than waiting, um, more years down the road since House Bill twenty seventeen passed. Um, so hopefully there's some, some, uh, reason or logic that helps in, in getting there, whether or not folks agree with, with those choices.
All right. Well, we have a long meeting tonight, so we're kind of going a little bit long on this portion of it. So, um, we'll move on to Counsel Tracy.
Thanks, Mayor. I'll try to be quick. Um, a couple of questions. Uh, what about the folks who are just doing pass through or travel through on two oh five? How is that tolling? How do they pay those tolls? Uh, they're not gonna necessarily have readers. And I don't understand how you guys are managing that part of the program. The other question I had is, uh, has ODOT tracked the Arlington, uh, ninety nine intersection during times when we have diversion based on congestion on the Abernathy Bridge? I mean, uh, it seems to me that we can get some real time, um, real world numbers from what that diversion looks like. We know what it looks like on the ground. Uh, I know that you're modeling it with a twenty forty, uh, exceedance over, um, tr- uh, transportation travel at that intersection. But I think we need to include, if it's not the human behavior variable that's part of modeling. So I, those are my two questions, because I think you have an opportunity for a real world look at what happens when we divert off of, uh, Aberdeen, off the, um, I two oh five and through our community.
Well, thank you, Counsel. I'll take the first one and be very brief. So, um, Garrett can ruminate on the second one. But the first one is that if folks come through and they're not part of our system, the transponders take a picture of the license plate, mail a bill. I just recently got one from driving through Washington State. I, I'm not a participant of their toll program. I was given a bill. Um, went online and paid that, or I could have mailed it in. We anticipate a similar, uh, setup of that. And so Garrett, I'll turn it to you for the questions around Arlington.
Yeah, I'll just build one more on that. We are working on the backend to make sure our tolling technology is operable with California, Washington, and even there's a certain type of technology used even just west of the Mississippi we're trying to plug into. So it's a seamless system. Um, and then I think to your, to your point about diversion today, uh, we did poll, it's called Streetlight. It's Bluetooth data. That's pulled off a lot of, um, like cell phones. We, we have access to that. So that informs some of the modeling. We're also looking at twenty twenty seven and twenty twenty forty. So the short and long terms of tolling to help pick that up. Um, but I, I think it really goes back to, uh, what Counselor Garland mentioned. I mean, we can study what diversion has looked like, but we're not really gonna know until the tolls are in place. And so I, I think what one of the key issues we're trying to work on now, and we'd love to hear from you all, is what, what kind of things do you want ODOT to monitor long term? Um, to see how diversion would impact communities once tolls are in place. So if you have thoughts or ideas about that, that would be great. Because again, um, no model, it's gonna get it perfect. You know, no plan, you know, these are projections on how we think behavioral work. So, um, my thoughts on that.
Great, thank you. Um, Counselor Ripley.
Um, you know, my only thoughts is I think we're gonna get kind of strong armed, and it really doesn't matter what we do. They're not gonna give us a choice. I think it's all about money. It's kind of funny that now we're hearing some of these, so what some of these plans are when if you would have started out telling us what the plans were and then went to talk about tolling, you have a totally different reaction from people. But you started out talking about tolling, it seems like now you're, you're like trying to formulate a reason why you're tolling. But I honestly don't, I don't think that anything I say or do is gonna have an effect on it. And I, I think we're, we're gonna get our arms twisted and not have a choice. It doesn't matter what we think or feel. We're gonna have to comply with people that don't live around here's wishes. That's all I have to say.
Thanks, Counselor Ripley. Um, next would be Counselor Hartman.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I guess, you know, a lot of the things that I hear and the, the issue that I see, you know, I look at this as two separate issues. You have the congestion problem and the expansion of the place. And then a totally separate thing is the seismic upgrade to the Abernathy Bridge. And it feels like they're being lumped in together. They're, to me, they're completely two separate projects. Um, and so my question is, you know, where, like, why do we need the tolls all of a sudden? Like, what funding stream has decreased? Um, you know, I've told that our gas tax is what funds, you know, our freeways. Is that why we need tolls all of a sudden to help, you know, with this, this seismic upgrade? And I, you know, am concerned that this region, um, that we don't have the representation on the people who are making these decisions. You know, who from Clackamas County is a part of the commission, a part of the board, a part of these decision making? Because we're the ones that are most affected by this. And right now, my understanding that it's mostly residents that, like Counsel Ripley mentioned, don't live in our community. And so while this doesn't, is not a tax on paper, it really feels like this is taxation without representation within our communities because we don't have anyone voicing what you've heard. Almost every elected official in this region going against this tolling project. I understand that the bridge needs seismic upgrades. I get that part. But I don't think, I don't believe that, you know, the tolling and, you know, on the backs of people to fund that. I think they're two separate job, or two separate projects. Um, and you know, and it brings up the big question I hear from people a lot is, it's our understanding, you know, federal law prohibits states from establishing tolls on existing interstate highways. And so why has this authorization been given to create a toll on an already existing uh, freeway? And then that brings it into, okay, that's why they're lumping it in together because we're, you know, expanding, we're recon, you know, reconstructing these roads. And so it like Counsel Alexander alluded to, it is murky. It is not transparent. It hasn't been clear. And I don't feel like the elected officials and the people in this region have to listen to. And so I hope that there can be more transparency moving forward and more representation, um, to the people that are actually making this decision. And I will be quiet.
Thank you. Um, I only have one thing, and that is that I feel Gladstone is gonna be affected more than the Westlands, the Oregon cities, because Gladstone has very minimal employment lands and significant sector of our citizenship has to commute outside of Gladstone to get to work. And we are fifty seven percent low to severely low income. That's a huge hit to our people. Um, and I do feel that we aren't being listened to. I'm on C four, so we talk about this every single month. We have meetings in between to talk about this, and I just, I'm having a really hard time seeing where our concerns are being addressed. And I'm sorry for being blunt like that. I know that you have a job to do and you have a timeline that you have to do it in. But I want to stress that we need to have a town hall for the city, for the city of Gladstone as soon as possible. And I know I didn't get to everybody's questions. We all have a lot of questions, but I think that we need to hold off until we can have a real robust town hall. So I, I want staff to, to get that scheduled as soon as possible. Any closing from our ODOT representatives?
Yeah, I'll be very brief. We appreciate the opportunity to participate in a town hall. Uh, and also again, invite you to our webinars. We, um, do need to set up a toll program that works for Oregonians and for folks from the Gladstone community. And we have time, we have opportunities to really lean into these policy decisions and have your input. We look forward to those conversations. We hear you that we haven't done a good job of engaging um, and reflecting back the needs and concerns that you have. And we pledge to do better, and we pledge to do better starting, um, right now. So please, uh, continue to let us know how we can continue to engage in ways that are meaningful for you. And thank you again for the time today.
Thank you very much for coming. Um, so could we pull the slideshow off? Perfect. All right, staff, any questions? Any comments?
I have nothing further. Thank you for the presentation tonight.
Great, thank you. Um, so next, any agenda additions or corrections?
Um, I have nothing, Mayor. Thank you.
I don't see any hands. Oh, Counsel Garland. You're muted.
So I've never done this before, but I have some corrections to one. And, uh, questions about eight and nine. So I, as I understand, the correct way to do it would be to pull those two items.
We're not on consent agenda yet. We're on any, any, um, agenda additions or corrections? Okay.
I would like to talk about the city charter and the council rules.
Okay, so we can add that as item seventeen. I know, because we just have a new charter that came into effect last month. So I need, I saw that there was some inconsistencies that we just need to clear up. All right, any additional addition, agenda additions or corrections? I don't see anything. All right. So now we're on the consent agenda. Counsel Garland.
So I guess I would like to pull one, eight and nine. Oh, wait, sorry, I'm sorry. I had nine. The eight, eight is the fire department. So one and eight from the consent agenda for discussion.
All right, one and eight. Anybody else have anything they need to pull on the consent agenda? Counselor Alexander.
Well, I just had a question. Do we pull it or do we talk about it right now before we accept it? I don't.
No, what I think, what we'll do is we'll, um, approve all of the other items on the consent agenda and then immediately follow that up with the discussion on the two polled items.
No, so that's what I want to know. So, but we'll get a chance after. I, I have a question about number nine.
Um, well, then this is the time to do it, yes.
Okay, so didn't, isn't that the crack seal machine? Or was it the story machine? I, I don't want to get them mixed up. So we had to contract with Hillsboro or and we're gonna buy our own. I just didn't understand that.
Just per process wise, to be clear, if you want to talk about an item on the consent agenda, you should pull it. So that would mean that you're pulling items one, eight and nine.
Okay, and that's what I want to do.
All right, any? All right, anything else? All right, so I would entertain a motion to approve consent agenda items two, three, four, five, six and seven. Anybody? Have a second?
Second.
Motion was made by Counselor Hartman and seconded by Counselor Garlandton to approve consent agenda items two, three, four, five, six and seven. Any further discussion? I don't see anything. Tammy, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Counsel, Counselor Alexander.
Yes.
Counselor Tracy. Counselor Hartman.
Hi.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
Counselor Garlandton.
Yes.
Counselor Ripley.
Yes.
Mayor Stimple.
Yes. Um, so items two through seven have been approved. So let's talk about number one, which is approval of December fourteenth, twenty twenty-one and January eleventh, twenty twenty-two minutes. Counselor Garlandton.
Okay, so I believe everybody, well, the email was sent out of the questions that I had. However, I don't always get to all of my email on the day either, so I understand if you didn't. In our packet in December on, or I'll go back, on page one dash four of our current book. And I went back and I looked in December's book where we appointed the people. It was ten, section ten A, ten B, ten C. So in section ten C, all the, I'm asking for is that the that ten, that third paragraph have a note, a note to that it's, we're talking about a planning commission appointment. That's, it's not that, I'm not that big. Anyway, and then at the bottom of page one dash nine, it mentions that how Counselor Todd exited the meeting and gave a time, but it didn't give a time or mention that Counselor Tracy also exited the meeting. And then and that was on page seven and eight. And then in the fourth paragraph on oh gosh, I didn't make a mention to where that was. I'm sorry. My apology. We were talking about the discussion on the street uh, on the daycare center that's on Glen Echo and Mr. Cannon Peroli made a mention that about there and who would designate those school zones. And I just would like it clarified just because it is a legal precedence, as our mayor alluded to, that, that that was clear on whose discretion it was. And quite honestly, I wasn't sure whose that was. So if somebody could answer that as well. And then, and that's all.
Thank you. Counselor Garlandton, have a lead. The last one that you mentioned is from the January eleven minutes. And we can see clarification. It is the local jurisdiction's responsibility to make that designation. So we will remove the word there and add local jurisdiction.
Thank you.
Any other changes, questions or concerns?
That was off me.
I don't see anything. So would somebody make a motion to accept consent agenda item number one with the changes that Counselor Garlandton mentioned?
Yes, I'd make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second, what are you doing?
I'll second.
Okay, Counsel Ripley. All right, motion was made to accept consent agenda item number one, approval of December fourteenth, twenty twenty-one and January eleventh, twenty twenty-two minutes with the corrections that Counselor Garlandton mentioned. A motion was made by Counsel Alexander, seconded by Counsel Ripley. Do we have any further questions or concerns? I don't see anything. Could you do a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Garlandton.
Yes.
Counselor Todd. Counselor Todd.
So I hit it. I hit it. I swear I did. Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Hartman.
Hi.
Counselor Tracy.
All right.
Counselor Alexander.
Yes.
Counselor Ripley.
Yes.
Mayor Stimple.
Yes. So item number one has been approved. Next is consent agenda item number eight. Award contract to Deacon Construction LLC in the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand, seven hundred and twenty-six dollars and thirty cents for the Gladstone Fire Department remodel. Counselor Garlandton.
I would just, I was just looking for a verbal explanation of why the sixty thousand dollar alarm was removed from the second bid on attachment B. And while I understand what it is, I just thought a little, a little further explanation could be warranted at such a large amount of money. Please.
So in your packet, you have two bids. One is the original bid that we went out the first time for proposals. The second is a revised bid after our fire chief and public works director did a valued engineering. So even though you do not see the sixty thousand dollar alarm system on the revised bid, it was installed separately outside of this contract. And if you have specific comments regarding that, we'd be happy to pull in our fire chief and public works director to answer that.
Does that answer your question, Counsel Garlandton?
Yes, just clarify, you know, that it needed, that it was done. And it, we're not just taking something out that wasn't, that was insignificant in any way.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
And since Counselor Garlandton pulled this from consent agenda, I'd like to also take an opportunity to state to the public that even though the city is exploring fire services options right now, one to include possibly contracting with Clackamas County Fire District, we will retain the Gladstone Fire Department regardless of which direction we go and that this remodel is warranted and needed. And we appreciate the city council's support. I also want to commend Fire Chief and Public Works Director for the work they did on value engineering, given the climate that we have right now, getting a contractor to bid and the costs of supplies and materials right now is outrageous. And so we did the best we could to get the price down to where it was, which is why we did the alarm system outside of this bid. But like I said, all three of us are available to answer any questions that you may have.
Any other questions or concerns? Counsel Ripley.
Um, I think my biggest concern is we have a meeting coming up in two weeks, a couple of weeks to talk about some issues with the fire department and how we're going to restore or get services back in Gladstone. So why are we talking about spending money when we don't even know what the, what the future of the department looks like? I think this should really be held off till after these other discussions happen. We need to be a little bit responsible with our community's money, and this is not a responsible decision to me. That's all I got to say.
Staff.
I'd be glad to address that. Thank you, Counsel for the question. Good evening, Mayor, Councilors. I, I believe the, the, the condition of the station and the lack of crew quarters has been identified over the last decade as needing to be done. Regardless of where we go with the future services of the Gladstone Fire Department, we, we need these remodeled efforts to improve the station. Not just livability, but quality of life and wellness for the firefighters. And I also believe that it would be probably more cost beneficial to do it sooner than later. And I believe that the capital funding that we have available now from the surplus of the ladder truck is, is an opportune time to do this without affecting the budget.
Any other questions or concerns? Counselor Tracy. I think that's a hand up.
Mayor, I didn't have my hand up, but I think Counsel Hartman does. Thank you.
Oh, you have a hand, a strange hand up in the corner. Okay, Counsel Hartman.
Yeah, I think my, my hand emoji is going on yours, Counselor Tracy. Um, I wanted to just, on the record, thank you Administrator Betts for clarifying that about the Clackamas County Fire Services and the building. I wanted to put on the record that contingency we have, that ten percent contingency, I noticed in the bid that it does say we are responsible for the permanent permits and fees, testing and inspections, and that's an additional cost by us. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. The permits have already been pulled. The only permits I believe that are outstanding is an electrical permit at this time.
Okay, but it shouldn't go over that extra twenty-two thousand dollars that we're having as that contingency?
No, not, hopefully not even close to that. But with, with pricing and everything like that, with the volatile market that we're in right now, um, we need to have a contingency on pretty much everything that we, we bring.
Totally fair. Thank you for the clarification.
All right, any other questions? I'll go Counsel Todd. Counselor Alexander.
None.
Counselor Garlandton.
None.
Counselor Tracy.
None, thank you.
All right, um, so I would entertain a motion to approve item number eight to award contract to Deacon Construction LLC in the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand, seven hundred and twenty-six dollars and thirty cents for the Gladstone Fire Department remodel.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion was made by Counsel Garlandton and seconded by Counselor Todd. Any additional discussion? I don't see anything. Tammy, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
Counselor Hartman.
Hi.
Counselor Tracy.
Hi.
Counselor Alexander.
Yes.
Counselor Ripley.
No.
Counselor Garlandton.
Yes.
Uh, Mayor Stimple.
Yes, so consent agenda item number eight has passed. Um, next is consent agenda item number nine, approval of purchase of a crack seal machine and public works for the street maintenance projects. Counsel Garlandton.
I believe this is Counselor Alexander.
Oh, I'm sorry, Counsel Alexander's.
Yeah, I just had a couple of questions about, um, so I know we, we contracted out to Hillsborough because they got the slurry seal machine. So we purchased this. Is that going to make it where we don't need the slurry seal machine as much? Does this crack seal machine that we're going to buy the crack sealer, does it, is it gonna, is it gonna keep our roads better longer? Are we still going to have to slurry seal? And if we do, are we going to have to slurry seal over this crack seal? That, those were the questions I was wondering about.
Yeah, so, um, slurry seal is completely different from crack sealing. Typically, you'll come in before you crack seal and, or before you slurry seal and you will crack seal your streets, things like that to keep the streets from transferring through the crack seal or through the slurry seal, sorry. Um, so two, two different, different treatments. There's roads in town through the pavement management system that require crack sealing with no other treatment. The idea of the crack sealing is to prevent water getting into underneath the roadway and deteriorating that. And that's the whole purpose of doing the crack seal. Last year, we, we did this in-house. I don't know the last time prior to that. I'm not privy to that because I was not here. We did approximately about a hundred thousand square, or a hundred thousand lineal feet of cracked sealing last year. In the past, I believe they have hired that out through a contractor. Uh, the cost on that is anywhere from a dollar to a dollar twenty-five a lineal foot. Um, with us bringing this in-house, that's going to save a tremendous amount of money. I don't have the actual, you know, amount that the savings will be. But this is a program that we're going to start now. We'll continue on until I, as long as we can possibly do it, it's a much cheaper process to go this route instead of hiring a contractor to do this.
Okay, so before, when, when we did the slurry seal, did those same people that we contracted, did they have to go ahead and do the crack seal before they did the slurry seal? Did we pay them or was it a whole different company to pay to do the crack sealer?
It, it was a whole different company. And my understanding is, is they were limited on budget as to how much they could actually crack seal. Typically, before you slurry seal, you want to crack seal as many, if not all cracks before they put down the slurry seal. My understanding is, is they were limited on that. And they were not able to get everything completed that needed to be done, which in the future could cause issues going forward.
Okay, so we'll be able to track this now. I mean, so if you, if, if we get this machine, you'll be able to track and show us at some of the meetings in the savings to the city and, and we won't be limited. We can, we can seal every crack before we contract out to get a slurry over it?
Yes, that is the plan going forward. You know, every crack is, is kind of hard to say. I mean, there's little cracks that you don't always see, but the idea is, is to do that. Last year, we did this. We rented the machine to do this work. Uh, the rental cost on that, I believe for, I, I can't remember the exact amount of days. I want to say twenty some days was somewhere in the neighborhood of five or six thousand dollars to rent the machine. This will be a much more cost effective way. The machine should last us anywhere from ten to fifteen years before it needs to be replaced. Um, so I mean, it, it's a solid investment that will help us in years to come.
All right, thank you, Derek. Perfect.
You bet.
Right, Counsel Hartman, any questions or concerns? Counselor Todd.
Nope.
Counselor Garlandton.
No.
Counselor Tracy.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So, um, Director, uh, Kenner Perolia, one of the things that we experienced when we were buying the back truck was the kind of a pushback from the, from the, um, community about expenditures. And one of the things that we had, um, Director, why not do is put together return on investment projections and give us kind of a report. So to your point, right, twenty-seven days or let's just say twenty days at six thousand dollars, pretty easy to do an ROI on that. That ROI helps answer a lot of the questions, I think, that that Counselor Alexander may be concerned about with the expenditures on the money. I would suggest it going forward. Uh, when we did it with the back truck, it was glaringly obvious to us that uh, we needed it because of the infrastructure save on that and just the fact that we were able to do so much more, more work with that. So it's just a friendly suggestion. If you just put together an ROI projector, a prospectus, that gives us a lot more to go on. We're having those community conversations with our folks about the expenditures on these types of, um, asset purchases.
Yeah, absolutely. No problem. We can do that.
All right, Counsel Ripley.
I have no questions.
All right, um, so then I would entertain a motion to approve the purchase of a crack seal machine in public works for street maintenance projects. Do I have a motion?
So I'll make that motion. Yeah. I'll second it. I'll second it. All right.
All right, so it was, okay. Motion was made by Counsel Tracy and seconded by Counsel Alexander. Do we have any further questions or concerns? I don't see any hands. Tammy, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Tracy.
Hi.
Counselor Alexander.
Yes.
Counselor Ripley.
Yes.
Counselor Hartman.
Hi.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
Counselor Garlandton.
Yes.
Mayor Stimple.
Yes, consent agenda item nine has been approved. Um, next is correspondence. Do we have anything? Says none here on the agenda.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Today, the City Council, myself, the city recorder, received a correspondence and complaint and the subject header from William Osborne. He had asked that this be admitted into the record under correspondence. All of you have received a copy of it and staff will post it to the city's website as additional information.
All right, thank you. Um, so a couple of the things before we start. First, for those folks that would like to speak, the deadline to accept comments was noon today. As a reminder, we allow three minutes for public comment. We had one person that signed up to speak, but they withdrawn that request. Second, as I do before every meeting, I would like to say a few words regarding the City Council. The most important limitation we have sitting here is that we are representing the citizens of Gladstone, not our own personal agendas and beliefs. There have been many times when a decision being made doesn't align with what we would like personally, but have made a decision based on what is best for the city as a whole. That does not mean our personal beliefs have changed, just that the city's needs were more important. As we discuss and consider matters, there are laws and rules we have to use as the basis of our decisions. These start at the federal and state level, then they filter down to our city's comprehensive plan, city charter, codes and ordinances. We do not have the luxury We do not have the luxury of randomly making decisions, but instead have to be consistent and take a path that is defensible. My goal is to keep this meeting respectful and engaging, so please help me do that. First item is number ten, which is consider approving the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one annual financial statements fiscal audit staff.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. I'm gonna ask our finance consultant Kathy Brucker to walk you through the staff reports.
Good evening. Thank you. Uh, as you know, the city is required to prepare and file annually with the State Auditor's Office, a set of prescribed reports detailing the financial condition of the city. The City of Gladstone Audit Committee met on January thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one to review and accept the annual financial reports for June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one as audited by Marina and Company CPAs. We have Craig Pop, the Senior Manager, on our job with us tonight to review key points with you and answer any questions you may have. Craig, I see you're here.
I am, yeah.
Thank you.
Uh, hi, everyone. Uh, good evening. Uh, it's a pleasure talking to you tonight. Um, I'm gonna kinda go through the city audit and kinda focus on some stuff that highlight the audit. Um, we completed the audits of the financial statements for the city and disclosure, uh, and issued a report. It contained an unmodified opinion or clean opinion, uh, on June seventh, two thousand twenty-two. Uh, this is the highest opinion we as auditors can give. Um, during the audit, um, we, we experienced no restrictions in the scope of our audits and encountered no significant difficulties incurred during the course of the audit as well. Uh, we encountered no disagreements with management as well. During the year, um, on the financial statements, the city adopted one additional significant accounting policy that is GASB eighty-four fiduciary activities is, it is identified and disclosed on the current year financial statements. Uh, management estimates and judgments were found to be appropriate in the circumstances. Um, some of the significant estimates the city includes are depreciation, uh, compensated absences payable, net pension liability, and then that OPEB or net other post-employment benefits liability. Uh, we did not find any transactions entered by the city during the year that lack any authoritative guidance. Uh, there were no material misstatements noted for proper presentation in the financial statements. Additionally, the state of Oregon requires us as auditors to opine on certain compliance standards. Um, we call this the Oregon Minimum Standards. Um, in the financial statements on page eighty-one, there is a report that we include that impines and identifies any kind of findings. Um, there were none this year. Um, a few of those major standards that we test during the course of our audit include, um, compliance with legal requirements for the budget, uh, compliance on the use of highway funds, i.e. gas taxes, and finally, compliance on public contracts and purchasing. Uh, we appreciate the opportunity to kind of, uh, be of service and to audit the city. We look forward to doing it again next year. If you have any kind of questions now or in the future, please don't hesitate. Let us know. Thank you.
Are there any questions regarding the city audit for twenty-twenty-one?
Oh, and I am mute.
Excuse me, Counselor Alexander?
None.
All right, Counselor Todd?
Um, no, but, uh, thank you again, Kathy. You're great. My pleasure.
Counselor Garlington?
I, I was, uh, got, got to sit in on the meeting, so I am all good. Thank you.
All right, Counselor Tracy?
No questions, thanks.
Counselor Ripley?
The screen does not like my fingers. I have no questions.
Counselor Hartman?
No question. Thank you.
All right, and I don't have any questions either, but again, thank you, Kathy. You do a phenomenal job.
Thank you very much.
Um, so I would entertain a motion to accept the Gladstone Annual Financial Report.
So moved. Second.
All right, we have a motion from Counselor Todd and seconded by Counselor Garlington to approve the City of Gladstone Annual Financial Report for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one. Any further questions or concerns? I don't see any hands. Tammy, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
Counselor Hartman?
Hi.
Counselor Tracy?
Hi.
Counselor Alexander?
Yes.
Counselor Ripley?
Yes.
Counselor Garlington?
Yes.
Mayor Stempel?
Yes. Our financial audit has passed. Um, next, we're going to be adjourning into an urban renewal agency meeting, so I need a motion to do so. Do I have a motion to adjourn to urban renewal?
I make that motion.
Do I have a second? Right, tandem. A motion made by Counselor Garlington and seconded in tandem by Counselors Alexander and Hartman to adjourn to our urban renewal agency meeting. Any questions or concerns? I don't see anything. Tammy, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Counsel, Counselor Tracy?
Hi.
Counselor Hartman?
Hi.
Counselor Alexander?
Yes.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
Counselor Ripley?
Yes.
Counselor Garlington?
Yes.
Mayor Stempel?
Yes, so at seven forty-five PM, we are adjourning to our urban renewal agency meeting. And first, Tammy Bannick, thank you for being our roll caller. You, you do this over and over and over again. I appreciate it. Um, item eleven is approval of the June twenty-second, two thousand twenty-one Urban Renewal Agency Meeting Minute, Minutes staff.
Mayor and City Council, the reason you have this before you is because we very rarely adjourn into an urban renewal agency meeting. So this is considered a consent agenda item, but we do need a motion and a second to approve the minutes.
All right, any questions and concerns from council? I don't see any hands. Would someone make a motion then to approve the June twenty-second, two thousand twenty-one Urban Renewal Agency Meeting Minutes?
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion was made by Counselor Tracy and seconded by Counselor Garlington to approve the minutes. Any further questions or concerns? I don't see any hands. Tammy, could you do the roll call vote, please?
Counselor Alexander?
Yes.
Counselor Hartman?
Hi.
Counselor Tracy?
Hi.
Counselor Ripley?
Yes.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
Counselor Garlington?
Yes.
Mayor Stempel?
Yes, so the minutes have passed. Next is item number twelve to consider approving the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one Urban Renewal Agency Annual Financial Statements and Fiscal Audit staff.
Thank you once again. And although the URA statements are presented within the state, city statements, the Urban Renewal Agency also issues a separate annual financial report and is again audited by Marina and Company. Craig, again, is here to comment on that also. If you do have any questions on the Urban Renewal Agency side, other than that, we'd like to once again request approval of the Urban Renewal Annual Financial Report for fiscal year ended June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one. And if you have any questions.
All right, Counsel Alexander, and, excuse me, Counsel Alexander, any questions? I'm looking at all these pages.
No.
Counselor Todd?
No, thank you.
Counselor Garlington?
None for me.
Counselor Tracy?
No questions, thanks.
Counselor Ripley?
Nope.
Counselor Hartman?
No questions. Thank you.
And I do not have any questions, so I would entertain a motion to accept the Urban Renewal Agency Annual Financial Statements and Fiscal Audit for twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one.
So moved.
All right, so we have a motion made. Motion made by Counselor Garlington and seconded by Counselor Hartman. Any further discussion? I don't see anything. Tammy, could you do a roll call vote, please? Again.
Counselor Garlington?
Yes.
Counselor Tracy? Counselor Todd?
Yes.
Counselor Ripley?
Yes.
Counselor Hartman?
Hi.
Counselor Alexander?
Yes.
Mayor Stempel?
Yes, so the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one Urban Renewal Agency Annual Financial Statements and Fiscal Audit has passed. And thank you very much for coming to our meeting, um, and doing such a fine job. Um, next, we need to adjourn back into our regular meeting, so I would entertain a motion to do so.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion was made by Counselor Garlington and seconded by Counselor Alexander to adjourn back to our regular meeting. Any questions, concerns? I don't see any hands. Tammy, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Uh, Counselor Hartman?
Hi.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
Counselor Tracy?
Hi.
Counselor Alexander?
Yes.
Counselor Garlington?
Yes.
Counselor Ripley?
Yes.
Mayor Stempel?
Yes, so we are adjourning back to our regular meeting at seven fifty PM. First is item number thirteen, which is Clackamas County Library Director Mitzi Olson is going to provide us with the annual report for the Gladstone Library. I don't see her up there.
Hold tight, we're bringing it on.
All right.
Can you also bring in Jason Vargas?
He should be able to move over and which will be, which one of you will be doing the presentation?
I'll have the presentation.
Okay.
Can I share the screen now?
I'm getting right there. Hang on.
Welcome, both of you.
Thank you, Tammy.
Thank you.
You should be able to share your screen now.
All right, give me one minute here. Can you see the screen?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor Stempel, councilors and city administrator beds. Thank you for the opportunity to provide, thank you for the opportunity to provide an update concerning the Gladstone Library. I am Mitzi Olson, Library Director of the Gladstone and Oak Lodge Library. Also today with me is Jason Vargas, Project Manager for the new Gladstone Library. Tonight, I'll be sharing information on the library timeline and statistics, how the library is doing and the types of services we have been able to offer during the pandemic. Jason will then provide an update on the ongoing Gladstone Library project. As you may recall, the City of Gladstone and Clackamas County entered into an agreement for the county to assume operations of the Gladstone Library beginning December two thousand nineteen and to build a new library in Gladstone. We had just begun integrating staff and operations when the pandemic forced us to close to the public on March eighteenth, two thousand, twenty twenty. We finally opened our doors to invite patrons back into the building on May tenth, two thousand twenty-one. The library statistics that I am sharing today reflect the impact of the closure. The statistics represent the entire twenty-twenty-one fiscal year before and after the merge and are being compared to the prior fiscal year of nineteen twenty. As would be expected, circulation, door counts and public internet usage fell, while patron use of electronic books and summer reading finishers increased. We were able to divert some of our book budget funds to purchase additional electronic resources to meet the patron demand. As we progressed through the pandemic, we continued to look for ways to reduce the impact on patrons and to provide core services. Compared to other libraries, we more closely maintain the hours our patrons could access staff and remove barriers to services such as offering drop-in curbside service instead of requiring appointments. Our daily drop-in curbside services allowed patrons to pick up their holds, choose lucky day items on display, request prints and copies and receive garden seeds. To aid patrons needing computer and internet access, we purchased laptops and Wi-Fi hotspots for checkout. These quickly became popular and remain so today. Patrons were able to request free prints and copies. Our homebound pro, program expanded to allow more vulnerable patrons to receive and return library materials by mail at no charge. Fines for overdue materials were waived and staff were available by phone and email daily for assistance. Reader advisory and book bundles were offered daily. Our summer reading program went online, but still provided in-person pickup of prizes. Our seeds for sharing program continued to grow by providing season-specific seeds to our patrons for pickup and access to our seed catalog online. Popular programs have continued virtually, reading groups and storytime. We collaborated with the Friends of the Gladstone Nature Park and the Gladstone Library Foundation to establish a pandemic-friendly story walk experience in the park. We used state ready-to-read grant funds to purchase frames and fittings. The stories and activities are bilingual and the stories rotate every season. Seeds for Sharing is a volunteer-run program supported by the Gladstone Foundation. We mailed patron seeds when closed due to the pandemic and also offered seeds to the Gladstone Food Pantry to encourage food security. We continue to promote and expand our seed offerings. The Rock Readers Book Club continued meeting virtually throughout the pandemic. We mailed books to members during the closure and we facilitated, facilitated what was for some their first experience with Zoom. We offered Take and Make Kids Craft Weekly during summer reading and have continued with monthly offerings. Our storytime offering changed during the pandemic. We initially created a YouTube channel to post pre-recorded videos of storytime games and songs. This transitioned into providing storytime on a weekly basis live via Zoom. We believe this is an amazing array of services to provide from our current location during the pandemic. We feel that going through this experience will make us appreciate the new building even more. With this in mind, let's have Jason give us an update on the Gladstone Building Project.
Thanks, Mitzi. Um, yeah, my name is Jason Varga. I'm the, the PM for the Oak Lodge and Gladstone Community Projects. And, um, I think last year you had a different PM presenting, so I, uh, got on this project as it was, uh, underway on SD schematic design. So what we'll go through today is we'll start with, um, the overall sched, project schedule. Uh, we'll, uh, show you some, um, pictures of the schematic design, uh, where we ended with that. We'll discuss, uh, cost and funding updates and we will, uh, talk about what the next steps are of the project. So the overall project timeline, so I think right after we, uh, updated last year, uh, we were, the master plan had just been approved and we were getting ready to start schematic design. So in the spring and fall, we did schematic design. It took longer than expected due to, uh, some cost issues, overruns. Um, we also brought on our CMGC, uh, P and C Construction. And, uh, between P and C and our architect, we, to bring these costs down, we spent a good amount of time uh, trying to value engineer, um, the cost of the project down to, uh, what would fit within our budget. Um, so with that work, we went to the, uh, Board of Commissioners on November twenty-third to get, we gave them some options, uh, in order to get approval to move to the next phase of design, which is design development. And they gave us that approval, um, on November twenty-third. So we are currently in the second phase of design and we hope to be complete with design overall, um, by late April or probably most likely early May. Um, and once that happens, we will submit the project for permit and we will, um, have P and C start bidding, uh, the scope. And then we are looking to, uh, start construction, uh, hopefully in October. Um, time, we would start construction on the project. So this is a view. Now I don't know how much any of you remember from last year. Uh, this is a little different than- So this is a view. Now I don't know how much any of you remember from last year. Uh, this is a little different than what we had in the master plan. Um, the big changes we made, and we'll talk about the value engineering later, is um, the sunscreen that you see. We've reduced the amount of it from the master plan and we also got rid of some of the privacy screening. That looked the same, but it was on the ground level, so we reduced that by uh, quite a bit. And then the other major change that you might not be able to tell is the community room, which is kind of on the top right corner. We've lowered the, the roof level down um, in that. This is a view of the vestibule from, from Dartmouth. Not much to say on this. Uh, this is the vestibule coming in, just a closer look. Um, something you'll notice that when we get into a little bit more is, originally we had um, a CLT across laminated timber structure. Um, to save some costs, we have changed to a steel structure, but we've tried to keep. Um, as much wood as we can in the project to give it um, kind of a warmer feeling. This is a view from Portland Avenue. And this is a view from Dartmouth uh, at the community room entrance um, towards the back of the building. And then this is a view as you walk into the library. If you look back towards the children's area, this would be your view um, of the library. And then finally, this is looking the other way from the children's area back towards um, Portland Avenue. So, budget and budget estimates. When we met with you last time, the budget was six million. We um, obssus our architect, we had a third-party estimator do the estimates for the schematic design. And those jumped up uh, one point four million to a total of seven point four. Uh, we brought PNC onboard about that same time that that, that estimate finished. And they came in a little bit higher at seven point seven. Um, so we worked with, with everybody on uh, a value engineering list. We came up with about thirty items. To consider for value engineering. The big one, like I mentioned before, was replacing the, the CLT with structural steel and structural, or uh, and steel decking for the roof. Um, we eliminated the radiant floor heating and replaced it with the VRF system. The radiant floor was a little bit, you know, uh, more energy efficient, but the VRF system is, is fairly efficient too. So we didn't think it was um, a big uh, issue to, to change that. Um, we do, reduced the amount of sunscreen and we reduced the volume of the offices above and uh. The volume above the offices and community room. So, funding. How did we uh, make up for that one million dollar um, increase in cost? Uh, the two big um, uh, funding um, sources that helped us was your state rep, Mark Meek. Was able to secure um, five hundred thousand in state ARPA funds for the project, which we very much appreciate. And um, when we went to the Board of Commissioners in November. They also approved another approximately two hundred thousand in um, county ARPA funds to use for this project. And so that's how we got to seven million. So what's, what's next? So uh, ongoing throughout this project, we're still engaged with the task force. We have a meeting coming up, uh, actually March sixteenth with the task force to go over. Uh, review the updated design and costs um, from the design development phase. And then, and after that, we'll have a similar meeting to talk about the construction documents. Uh, we're also engaged with the art subcommittee, um, which is part of that task force to. Start uh, figuring out how to integrate public art into the building design. So uh, they're doing a great job of helping out with that. In uh, starting this month and going through May, we are preparing for early demolition of the old city hall. Just last week, we had a, a pre-bid walk with interested subcontractors and we had uh, really good attendance for that. So I'm hoping we get some competitive uh, bids for that. So we are starting the process of uh, abating the building and uh, getting ready to demo it, demo it. Uh, we're also looking at um, exploring some, some other uh. Materials that are a lot longer lead than they used to be, especially steel, even insulation. Uh, stuff that usually wasn't an issue before to get uh, in a reasonable amount of time. It feels like almost everything um, takes eight to nine months to get. So uh, in order to have that start date, we, we will most likely have to purchase some materials. Um, sooner than we normally would in the process. Uh, we are currently in the design review process uh, for this project and that is going very well. We have a, a meeting coming up next week, a week from now, um, with the Gladstone Planning Commission to discuss. And hopefully keep that, that moving. Once we get that design review complete, that will allow us to. Submit the project for permit once design is, the total design is complete. Um, June through September, we'll be uh, working, it'll be in with, with the city uh, for permit approval. We'll continue looking at long lead materials and procuring as needed to meet our schedule. And we'll finalize our GMP with PNC um, for the whole project. And like I said, hopefully in October of twenty twenty-two, we will be starting construction. Right now, we are, we're saying, we're, we're estimating it's a twelve-month schedule. If we can beat that, we will. But um, for right now, we're, we're still estimating about a twelve-month duration for construction. Um, these last, let's see, library update schedule.
If I could address that one, you know, since we. Since we assumed operations of the library on December first of two thousand nineteen. We've, we've kind of had an awkward schedule here with the updates and that the, the information I provide you is from the prior fiscal year. So I'd like to sync, sync this with the end of the fiscal year and provide another update in September of this year. So that we can get on schedule of just providing the update right after the end of the fiscal year. And any questions?
All right, Counsel Alexander, questions?
No, looks great.
Counselor Todd.
No, no, thank you.
Counselor Garlington.
So I just want to uh, reiterate our, uh, my heartfelt thanks for keeping this project moving. Um, there was a lot of moving parts. There was a lot of moving people and I appreciate every one of you for everything that you've done to make it happen. Um, I'm sure you've heard me say before that a town without a library is nothing more than a bus stop. So we don't want to be a bus stop. We want to be someplace that people want to come and visit us, so. And I'd also like to give a second shout-out on that half a million dollars from the Clackamas County Commissioners. I sat in on a hearing on um, them discussing all of the different projects that were out there. That they could all choose to give their, uh, they each got a portion of money. And all the great projects that they talked about, that they could give all of their money to. And I, 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 my heart goes to the Gladstone Library, of course. But some of these other projects were just fabulous, you know, daycare centers, taking care of families in need, all sorts of stuff. So, we should feel incredibly, incredibly grateful for having gotten that five hundred thousand dollars. Because there was a lot of very needy projects out there, so um, again, thank you all for making this happen. I'm just really excited to see that building come down and things start moving. Thanks.
Counsel Tracy.
Making a short echoing, a lot of Counselor Garlington sentiments on this. I also like to just say that nice, I'm finally seeing some light at the end of the tunnel. And uh, to some of our citizens who've said never, um, never say never. We are actually going to do this. And I really appreciate uh, Mitzi, the work that you put into it, the presentations you brought forward. And the thoughtful uh, engineering, certainly on the value engineering side, Jason. So thank you very much for, for making this a reality for our community.
Counsel Ripley.
I got nothing.
Counsel Hartman.
I also want to echo what Counselor Garlington was, um, sharing her, you know, thanks. And I just also want to say thank you for all of the shifts that you did during the pandemic and all of the services that you offered. With the homebound um, delivery and the Wi-Fi in the parking lot. I know that that came in, in, in real handy for those that did not have access to Wi-Fi during. Uh, when we were uh, doing learning at home, so thank you for those services as well.
Well, I want to say thank you to everybody that has lifted this project up and carried it forward. City Administrator Betts has been such a champion for this.
Yeah.
Five years ago, when I became mayor, we were suing the county over the library and it was never going to happen. So the fact that we're here five years later is just amazing and it's really going to happen. I still can't believe it. Um, five years seems like a long time, but in the um, grand scheme of things for cities, that's, you know, warp speed. So thank you to everybody that has really championed this and pushed it forward. Um, I don't think that I have any questions, but if there's anything that we can do to help speed up the construction, we'll let you know. And we're going to be planning a, I'm thinking a sledgehammer party where we can all get our sledgehammers and. And, and beat up the building, get our aggressions out on that. So um, anything else from staff? So Jason, are you going to be the PM throughout the project now?
Uh, I hope so. That's the plan.
Good. Well then, we'll be seeing a lot of you. Um, and so Greg, you have a hand up, kind of sort of. It's this weird floating hand. Do you have a question?
No, where's it, where's it floating?
It's in the bottom corner. It's really odd, so maybe it's just my glasses. I don't know.
No, I think it's doing great. It's all good.
All right, Jackie, did you need anything else from us on this one?
No, thank you guys for your presentation tonight. We look forward to seeing you at Planning Commission next Tuesday.
Yeah.
Thank you. So excited. Thank you, thank you, thank you. All right, um, item number fourteen is to consider approving the lease agreement with Clackamas County for the new library, which is to be located at five two five.
Hold tight just a moment, Mayor.
Did I do that?
No, I'm, I apologize for that. It, I clicked on the wrong uh, wrong person. Sorry about that.
Well, I got so many things out here. Who knows what buttons I've been pushing. All right. So next is item number fourteen, consider approving the lease agreement with Clackamas County for the new library to be located at five two five, Portland Avenue. Staff.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. In continuing that spirit of collaboration. We thought it was fitting tonight to ask you to go ahead and approve the lease agreement. For Clackamas County to have the new Gladstone Library built. If you recall back into the settlement agreement, um, as part of that agreement, we agreed to allow the county. To lease the old city hall police department site for one dollar a year, as long as they're going to operate a library there. The city attorney drafted a very simple agreement. Um, it is one dollar a year that they will make payable to the City of Gladstone, which will be deposited into the general fund. And once the city council approves this, it'll go back to the Board of County Commissioners. And I believe that we will have a lease agreement in place.
Simple agreement, that just doesn't sound right, Chad. I'm sorry, that there's never a simple IGA. Um, uh, so does anyone have any questions? Counsel Alexander.
None.
Counselor Todd. Counselor Garlington.
No questions.
Counsel Tracy.
Only that, can we make this a cash transaction so we don't generate thirty dollars in penalties?
We did kind of joke about that in management meetings, yes.
All in pennies. Counsel Ripley.
No questions.
Counsel Hartman.
No question.
I, I changed my mind.
You've changed your mind, okay.
I would like to, I just asked one question. On number six, uh, the last sentence, is that in the event or? Should that be in the event?
In not event. I don't think that's the last sentence.
Geez, Chad.
I think it's no, isn't it, Chad?
No.
In no event. Okay, I was darned. I thought I got it right. Congratulations to the person who got it.
All right, so we have one small modification to it. Um, any other questions?
In Chad's defense, one of his counterparts prepared this today.
So I would entertain a motion to approve the IGA.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Yeah.
Motion was made by Counsel Tracy, seconded by Counsel Garlington. To approve the intergovernmental agreement between Clackamas County and the City of Gladstone regarding round lease agreement for the new Gladstone Library. Any additional questions or concerns? I see none. Tammy, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
Counselor Tracy.
Hi.
Counselor Hartman.
Hi.
Counselor Garlington.
Yes.
Counselor Ripley.
Yes.
Counselor Alexander.
Yes.
Mayor Stempel.
Yes, the lease agreement has been approved. Next is item number fifteen, to consider approving Resolution one two zero four. A resolution declaring the city's intention to reimburse expenditures from proceeds of tax-exempt obligations. Staff.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. We've kept you appraised of the progress moving forward on the new public works facility. Tonight, your finance consultant is going to talk to you about a resolution that allows the city to reimburse itself. For expenses that we're already incurring for that project. So with that, I will have Kathy walk you through the staff report.
Thank you, Jackie. At the March eighth, twenty twenty-two city council meeting, staff will be presenting the authorizing resolution. To issue debt for the design and construction of the new public works facility. At that time, then we'll start the whole process as far as actually securing the cash to uh, complete this project. This resolution we're considering tonight is designed to allow the city to reimburse itself for any expenses incurred. Prior to the actual receipt of the funding for the project. As long as this resolution is issued within sixty days of initial project expenditure. And reimbursement is requested within the timelines that are stated within section four of the resolution. The city may recover costs from funds available within the financing. For example, this may apply to preliminary design and engineering costs if necessary to advance prior to the actual funding. So it's a very simple resolution, but is something that uh, technically we do want to um, push through. Are there any questions regarding this resolution?
Uh, Counsel Alexander.
I just, please, just, I just want to understand it, right? So what, what this is that we want to vote on is that we're voting to, when we get the loan, to reimburse the city. For the money we're going to spend now to start the project.
Yes, in a nutshell.
Okay, all right, that's right. That's sort of how I figured it, but I just wanted to make sure that's what I'm, I'm reading and thinking. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Good job.
Counselor Todd.
That, Counsel, I would have clarified it for me, so thank you.
Counsel Garlington. Counsel Garlington.
No questions, my apologies.
Counsel Tracy.
No questions, thanks, Mayor.
Counsel Ripley.
No questions.
And Counsel Hartman.
No question, thank you.
All right, and I have no questions, so I would entertain a motion to adopt Resolution one two zero four. To declare the City of Gladstone's intention to reimburse expenditures from proceeds. to declare the city of Gladstone's intention to reimburse expenditures from proceeds of tax exempt obligations.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion was made by Counsel Alexander, second of my Counselor Garlington. Do we have any questions or concerns? I don't see any hands waving up there. So, Tammy, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Garlington?
Yes.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
Counselor Hartman?
Hi.
Counselor Tracy?
All right.
Counselor Alexander?
Yes.
Counselor Ripley?
Yes.
Mayor Stempel?
Yes. So, the adoption of Resolution number one two zero four to declare the city of Gladstone's intention to reimburse expenditures from proceeds of tax exempt obligations has passed. Next is a public hearing to consider approving Resolution one two zero five, a supplemental budget to accept the Department of Land Conservation Development, which is DLCD, grant funds and the new community services manager position. So, since this is a public hearing, it needs a first and second reading. Is that correct?
No, it doesn't. It's a resolution. So, it's only approved once. No one has signed up to speak tonight regarding this, but after Kathy goes through the staff report, we may want to see if anybody has public comment.
Okay. Thank you, Steph.
All right. Thank you very much. So, this resolution will accomplish several budgetary issues with passage. First off, it will, is the establishment of a new fund, the American Rescue Plan Reserve Fund, recognize the increased resources from both the American Rescue Plan Grant or ARPA and also the Department of Land Conservation and Development Grant that we received. And then finally, it will transfer the contingency funds for the new community services manager position within the senior center budget. So, Oregon budget law dictates the method for appropriation increases after the initial budget is approved based on the amounts involved in the funds that are affected. Because of the stated issues, the city is required to hold a public hearing with the supplemental budget to allow public comment on the resolution. These increases are necessary due to additional grant funds that were received from the ARPA grant of two hundred and twenty-five thousand three hundred and forty-four dollars after the budget had been approved to a total of two million seven thirty-seven three hundred and forty-four dollars. And then for a grant that was awarded for planning assistance of sixty-two thousand six hundred and eighty-five dollars. Also, for full transparency on the use of the ARPA funds, staff determined it would be best to create a new budgetary basis fund to transfer the resources and appropriations for full accountability over the life of the grant, which is slated to possibly last up to four years. This includes a transfer of one million two hundred and ten thousand in planned infrastructure monies to the sewer revenue fund also. Finally, with the hiring of the community services manager in October twenty twenty-one, the personnel services budget needs to be transferred from general fund contingency back to the senior center. You may remember during the budget process, we had set those funds aside in contingency until there was a firm decision made on what type of position, how the position would be hired and when. So, overall, this will increase the city of Gladstone twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-three biennium budget by one million four hundred ninety-eight thousand and twenty-nine dollars to a total of fifty-seven million five hundred and sixty-one thousand nine hundred and forty-six dollars. Approval of this resolution will allow the city to stay within budget compliance, follow all those budget laws I'm always harping about, and then fully utilize all the available grant funding. I believe the resolution itself has illustrated how the funds are moving around from what funds to what other funds and the amounts that it will change and increase or decrease the, the affected funds. So, are there any questions about this resolution?
Counselor Alexander?
No, I believe I got it. Thank you.
Counselor Todd?
Basically, doing all of this is going to be, so when we have our audits done, everything will be very clear. It'll be in its proper little place and make sure that we're compliant, correct?
Yes, we are. No budget violations.
I never doubted it for a minute.
Counselor Garlington?
No questions. Thank you.
Counselor Tracy?
No questions. Thank you.
Counselor Ripley?
No questions.
Counselor Hartman?
No questions. I just want to thank you, Kathy, for always making this so clear. Hard to follow, but it, when you explain it, it's perfect. So, thank you for your work.
All right. And I don't have any questions. So, then I would, I would entertain a motion to adopt Resolution number one two zero five to increase the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-three biennium budget by one million four hundred ninety-eight thousand twenty-nine dollars to a total of fifty-seven million five hundred and sixty-one thousand nine hundred and forty-six dollars as permitted by ORS two nine four point four six three and two nine four point four seven one.
I moved.
Do I have a second?
A second.
All right. Motion was made by Counselor, oh, excuse me. Nope. Let's back up. Before we do this motion, we're going to take that off the table. It's a public hearing. So, do we have anybody with their hands raised that would like to speak?
I do not show anyone currently with their hand up asking to speak.
All right. Thank you. Now, I would entertain a motion.
I moved.
All right.
Second.
All right. Motion was made by Counselor Hartman and seconded by Counselor Alexander. Any further discussion? I don't see any hands. Tammy, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Tracy?
Hi.
Counselor Hartman?
Hi.
Counselor Alexander?
Yes.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
Counselor Garlington?
Yes.
Counselor Ripley?
Yes.
Mayor Stempel?
Yes. So, the adoption of Resolution number one two zero five to increase the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-three biennium budget by one million four hundred ninety-eight thousand twenty-nine dollars to a total of fifty-seven million five hundred sixty-one thousand nine hundred and forty-six as permitted by ORS two nine four point four six three and two nine four point four seven one has passed. Thank you. So, next is our added agenda item number seventeen, which is the city charter. I know Mindy, who is the city charter person, had some clarifications or tweaks that needed to be made. So, everything was in compliance.
Mostly, I think I just had questions and clearly couldn't clarify them on my own. So, I wrote them down and decided to share them and thought that there could be a discussion. And then after I got these read and, and, and I was, as I was reading through the council or the city charter and it referred back to the council rules. So, of course, I got those, that, all that out. And I noticed, I mean, right off the get-go, the very first sentence is, refers back to this, this and this, and that, that and that are gone. So, um, and I, I just thought, you know, at this point, there's, you know, seven of us that kind of feel comfortable working together that we, you know, we can get things done. Nobody's new and timid, like maybe I might have been about nine months ago. And just thought, well, you know, maybe we could pull some people together and maybe a couple of people from the community, if that's what it takes, and make sure that the council rules are what we want them to say and reflect back properly to the city charter. So, with that, you've seen my questions. Maybe somebody can answer them.
Staff?
That's a good start.
So, yes, I've seen your questions we received in this afternoon. I don't know if I'm prepared to answer any of them. I did also turn to the city attorney. I'm not sure if Chad had a chance to look at them. I do know that in the new charter, one, one of your questions, Counselor Garlington, was how often are you supposed to update the rules? And it does say in section ten during odd numbered years. So, that would mean in twenty twenty-three, the city council should begin a review of their council rules. I am assuming that Chad could probably chime in on some of the concerns you have about relevancy now that certain wording has been removed in regards to the city council rules. But it's really up to the city council if you want to make this council goal that you want to work on and create a subcommittee. That's your purview to do that. But I'm going to pause and see if Chad has anything to add first.
Sure. Thanks, Jackie. So, a couple of things. First, generally, when a city adopts a new charter, you need to take a look at not only things like your council rules, but also your entire city code. Because often the city code has provisions that may conflict with the existing charter. Typically, that's either done through the city recorder's office or with the, with your co-publishing company will often do a lot of that work. Honestly, it's something that is directed by the council to sort of initiate that work. So, if it's something that you all want to do, our office is certainly more than willing to work with either Tammy or with your code publishers to sort of go through and figure out where those inconsistencies exist and bring it back to you as far as what needs to be updated. And then once that's done, you can then determine, you know, if there are substantive changes you want to make or if they're just sort of conforming changes. So, for example, if the charter, if a co-provision refers to a specific section of the charter that no longer exists, it may be as simple as just re, referring to the new renumbered section of the charter, because a lot of those charter provisions just transferred over and may have slightly different language, but the basic premise is exactly the same. But there may be some substantive changes by Counselor Garlington is talking about with the council rules that you all as a body, we may want to make. So, the first step really would be sort of what I will refer to as an audit of your code to figure out what needs to be updated. And then we can bring that back to you all if this is a priority for you to say, here's what should be updated and changed. And then you can give us direction as to whether or not you want to make any substantive changes. At that point in time, you could certainly form a subcommittee to do that, as suggested by Counselor Garlington. The one thing I'll point out with a subcommittee is that there, a subcommittee is no different from the city council as far as public meetings laws are concerned. So, you'll still have to have public notice. You'll still have to have minutes, you know, all that other sort of stuff that we have to do to comply with public meetings laws. So, it's really just a matter of, you know, is it more convenient to have just a smaller group of people working on this as opposed to the full council? But otherwise, the procedures that we have to follow will all be the same for a subcommittee as opposed to the council as a body itself. So, that's the, the typical process of how it works. I'm happy to answer if you want me to look at the specific questions that Counselor Garlington raised. I didn't get a chance to look at those this afternoon. I was in meetings all afternoon. But I do, do have the email here and I can certainly talk about those specific questions if you want.
Counselor Garlington?
Yes, I would like.
Okay. You will not be electing a new council president tonight because that's not on the agenda. It's not something that's been discussed. Your second question is how long does it take to update council rules and when we should be, should, should we be prepared to begin? As I just explained, typically, that's a process that occurs at your direction. So, you can be prepared to begin at any time. Again, I would suggest sort of that audit first, so you're getting the full universe of everything that needs to be updated, not just your council rules, but that's a call for you all to make. Has this been done? A nomination ordinance or will we need to add this to an agenda? I'll have to go back. I don't know the answer to that question off the top of my head. Section twenty-nine, it continues until the successor qualifies and assumes office. Does this mean that if no one ran or the newly elected person didn't show up to swear in, the current seat holder would remain? Yes, that's what that means is basically we don't create a gap if someone doesn't qualify for new office, that that person would remain until the council followed the vacancy procedures to appoint someone new for that process. You said in addition, there is Resolution eleven twenty-nine for the, the council rules. And I think that's sort of what we just talked about as far as updating the council rules. Was that helpful or did you need more information on any of those?
That's very helpful. I think that, you know, that we, we just, I have, you know, it just leaves a lot of gaps and I'm not really one for gaps. I'm a little more rule oriented. So, um, I would like to make sure that this is fixed sooner than later so that there aren't questions about open-ended items.
Well, with the brand-new city charter that was voted on by the people in November, I think it's important that we do at least the conforming changes as soon, as soon as we can because that just makes the most sense. You know, referring to sections that no longer exist isn't a good idea. We need to make sure that they're in conformance. And I don't know, do we want to put this on an agenda in the future to actually dig in deeper to figure out what kind of a committee we want to form or if we even want to do that? And I'm assuming it would have to be kind of like an ad hoc committee makeup? Yes? No?
I, are you looking for a direction or answer from Chad?
Chad and Jackie, probably.
Okay.
It can really be whatever the council as a body wants to do. You guys have lots of discretion about how you want to handle that. Again, you know, typically what I would recommend is that you, if, if this is something you want to pursue, that the council just gives direction to staff to prioritize this, to do sort of that full audit. And then we can work with Tammy and your co-publishers and Jackie to figure out the best process to do that. And we can bring that information back to you so you have a better idea of the scope of the work and whether or not, and to what extent you want to create a committee or do some other sort of action.
Does that sound fair, Counselor Garlington? Do we want to do that? Have them come back to us?
Well, I think, I, I think, I wasn't trying to make a mountain out of it, but I just don't, I think it has to be done. I just don't think that you can leave loose ends like this. And so, yeah, I believe that this needs to be cleared up.
All right. Well, then I would like to, is next month too soon? Should we push it off to April? How much time do you guys think you're going to need? June, July, August?
My, I'm honest, I would have to farm this out. My workload is stacked for the next few months. I think that I need a majority of the council to give direction to staff. If this wants to be prioritized higher than other projects we're working on, then, then I'm happy to operate that way.
Okay. Well, I'm just going to do a consensus really quick. Counselor Todd, how do you feel about that?
Um, I'm, I'm fine with doing an audit of just finding out where we are with, with certain things, if it's leading to chapters that aren't there, that sort of thing. To me, it doesn't need to be done right this minute, but it does need to be done. I would say this year would be nice, but I'm not wanting to look at anything, put, pushing it ahead with more substantive changes. That's how I feel. Is that it? Does that make sense?
Okay. Counselor Alexander?
Um, yeah, clarity, clarity is always great. It leads to transparency. So, I think, I, I don't know where I prioritize it, but it needs to be addressed. Yes.
Okay. Counselor Hartman?
I feel the same way. I think I'll leave it up to Administrator Betts. That's where it can fall into the workload. But if it is leading to chapters that don't exist, I don't know if there's a way that we're able to make a note for the timing so that we are acknowledging to the public if anyone notices that. But I mean, it definitely should be addressed. And I guess it feels like we should have known that we should have been doing this as the charter was, you know, voted in in November, like maybe we know that now if we do any charter changes in the future.
Counselor Ripley?
Having any clean, good document is always important. So, if there's something needs to be cleaned up, we need to clean it up. But we also need to remember that a lot of people put a lot of work into this, this, this charter right now. And we never know what's going to get in this. Something might slide through. So, if there's some cleaning up, we need to do it, but we need to, we need to continue to remember that people put the work into what we have right now.
A question.
Yes, Counselor.
We're, we're talking about cleaning up the council rules to match the charter, not, not the charter to the council rules, right? I mean, the charter was voted on. The charter is the charter. Okay. I was just making sure.
We can't change that. Counselor Garlington?
I agree that I, I don't want to overstep the work that Administrator Betts already has by any means. That would never, I would never ask her to push something, you know, ahead of something else because she, you know, has a list and we got to stay on our list sometimes. But I, I would like to see it cleaned up. I would like to see it cleaned up at least before we, this, this is an election year and I think it's really important that it Uh, this, this is an election year, and I think it's really important that it be cleaned up before we have new people in. So, you know, quite honestly, I would like to see it cleaned up at the very latest by November, just. Knowing that that's kind of, you know, the time that things would be handed off to new people if new people came in or not. Um, so that would be my timeline, but no, as Counselor Todd stated, I'm not looking to step on any other projects in any way.
Council Tracy.
Once again, Counselor Garland just basically said what I would have said. I, I appreciate the November timeline, Counselor, and I think, um. Administrator Betts, you're gonna give us a, we're gonna be more informed if you kinda give us an idea about workload and what that impact would be, so. Uh, I was afraid we were gonna go for May, but I think pushing it to November and tightening it up prior to, um, folks taking their seats. Would be important, so, um, yeah, I mean, but you're gonna be the one that's gonna tell us about your workload.
Right, and I agree with everything that everybody said. I think it's important that we get it done. I would say. Like the end of August, but if you guys think November is fine, then, then that works. I think it's important that we're consistent. And with this new guiding document called the City Charter, we need to make sure everything's in alignment. So does that give you direction? All right, is that, are we finished that, that item number, Council Garland?
Thank you for discussion.
All right, thank you. So next, is business carried forward? Do we have anything?
Just two items that are to be highlighted. It was appropriate for us to include the letter regarding how Gladstone. Feels about tolling. I just kind of wanted to have it in the packet. So that the public is aware that Gladstone elected officials are involved with these conversations at the regional level. And we can continue to need to be, and we really need to work on engaging our local citizens. So they understand what the impacts of the tolling is going to be. The second item is under business carried forward, because typically your second meeting of the month is a work session. And you don't allow public comment, but I wanted to call out that we are calling it a special meeting. Specifically because we want public comment, and so. The fire chief and I will be discussing further options regarding fire services for the city council. And we want the public to participate. We want them to listen to what we have to say. We want their questions. So please, if you know people that have concerns or questions, reach out to them and try to get them to be involved with. The special session that we're gonna have on February twenty-second. And those are the two items I had, Mayor, thank you.
All right, uh, next is business from the audience, and we do not have business from the audience. So we're moving to business from the council, so we'll start with Counselor Alexander.
Okay, I just wanna say, yeah, um, I wish I could have got to ask those people from the tolling. Once, I mean, I heard two, I, I don't know if anyone paid attention or, or heard what I heard, but I heard a seven hundred million dollar project. And then a three hundred and fifty million dollar project, and I sort of didn't know how that worked, or is there a grant, is someone matching somebody? And, and I don't know if I didn't hear this in there, once, once it's paid for, will they, will they quit tolling? But those are just questions I have to ask them, but I've been on two of their meetings and they don't let you ask those when you're on their meetings. And so the other thing is that the fire department on that special meeting, yeah, I hope people get out there and, and we get a lot of involvement. Because I've heard a couple of good ideas, and not only do we need their concerns and questions, but we need their ideas. If they've got anything that can help or benefit the fire department. And, um, I'm glad, and it's great that our police department is fully staffed, which says, not, not all of them are. So that's a plus, and besides that, have a good evening.
Right, Counselor Todd.
I don't have anything to say, shockingly, so, thank you.
Council Garland.
So, uh, the county library board is meeting on February seventeenth, and they're having a. Pre-meeting to further discuss the library task force for the North Oak Grove Library. Um, and as you all heard, we're moving forward with Gladstone. But, um, being on that board, I'm trying to move them forward and hopefully, you know, they'll see a library down there too. That's better than what they've got. And then I, I would really like to invite, if anybody's still watching, we have twenty-seven participants, it looks like. Um, so I had asked Administrator Betts if we could get some, um, more updating on our calendar. Because I just felt like every time I looked on a different city's calendar, they had so many fun things, but we have fun things now, people. We have fun things. So if you go to the city webpage and you click on the community page and you go to our calendar, there are things on our calendar. There are lots of things on our calendar. And I'd like to see our library add to that. I'm really excited to see our calendar filled in. It just. Um, it makes it feel like community, and I like community. That's one of the biggest reasons that we live here, so. Um, that I just, you know, our city is really doing a good job with the information, and I'm hoping that more groups really work at. Con- connecting with, um, whoever they need to connect with, Administrator Betts, I'm not sure, but. Making sure that everybody's activities are there. Okay, I wanna say a very happy Valentine's Day to everyone. Um, every time I think of Valentine's Day now, I always think of that fiftieth wedding anniversary. That the senior center puts on, cause there's always so many hearts, and I know it's not at this time, but, you know, so it just kind of, they're out there, and I, um. I hope that every person, every couple out there that has celebrated fifty years or more, you go, just good for you. Um, enjoy President's Day off for some people. I, those, some that are lucky to get it and others are lucky to have a job, right? And then I'd like to add that I hope everyone takes time to learn something during our Black History Month. And I've gotten in on a couple of, uh, webinars and really interesting things that, you know what? Live and learn, and, um, it's been a, a great, uh, learning experience for me, and. Um, I hope to learn even more, so with that, everyone have a lovely February, oh, and really do. Get on our fire department meeting, come with ideas, come with, um. Solutions to our challenges, come with questions so that we and our administration. Covers everything possibly that we need to cover, every question answered. We don't wanna leave it out there. That we didn't, you know, turn over a stone, so that's all I'll quit talking. Have a good night, everybody.
I was laughing at Tracy Todd and her cat. I have a ninety-five pound lap dog that thinks every Zoom meeting is all about him. And he decides to sit on my lap. Okay, Council Tracy.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So I don't know that a very many of our citizens are aware that we are actually partners with, um, Oak Lodge Water Services and Sunrise Water District. On the ownership of a water plant. We get a hundred percent of our water from that particular plant. Last month, we went through, uh, I, I meet with the Board of Commissioners. I, I am honored to serve as a commissioner on the board. With, uh, the other partners. We had a clean bill of health on our financial audits, looked really sound. One of the things that we noticed, um, in the reporting is that the plant is twenty years old now. And we're starting to see the R and R, um, dollar values go up, and they're increasing fairly exponentially. So what we're looking at right now over the next, uh, six years is approximately four million dollars in needed R and R. We're, um, fortunate in that we have a general manager who's managing this plant pretty well. Um, he's out of the Sunrise Water District. We put away a lot of money and we put away a lot of reserve funds. Uh, I'm happy to say that we'll probably be able to cover those capital expenditures over the next six years. We're putting away. Anywhere from three hundred to six hundred thousand dollars in reserves, capital reserves over, uh, that timeline. And we should be able to cover, uh, three to four million dollars of the four point four million projected. Um, just for information, actually Gladstone, uh, doesn't see growth, obviously, uh, like these other cities, certainly Sunrise and Oak Lodge. Um, they are starting to draw anywhere from fifteen to thirty percent increases every year in water amounts, where Gladstone's staying pretty static. Um, it's just, uh, it's a really good plant. It's run by, um, some really professional folks. And we're really fortunate to be able to kind of control this, because we act in, in a lot of ways, we act as kind of a backup to some other folks, uh, in our region. There's many different water districts. We all share the conveyance systems. I just wanna basically give a shout out to the folks who run NCC, uh, they see, the, these folks have, uh, kept this system very tight. We're fortunate to have such good partners. When I first came on the commission. Um, we had had some issues, uh, from the Gladstone side, because we were a little bit more demanding about, uh, our position in, as part of, part plan owner. Uh, I think we've rebuilt those relationships. We've also pulled back and clogged back some of our water rights over the, the years. Um, but right now, everything's sa- sound financially, the plant's in pretty good shape, but we're gonna be looking at some increased costs going, uh, into the next ten years. I think that's just good for the citizens to hear. They ca- they have to understand, you know, once you start getting past the twenty-year point. With a lot of public works, facilities, you start to incur, uh, costs and they'll start to mount. Um, but I just can't say enough about how well they've run the system and we're in good hands with them so far. Thank you.
Matt, thank you for taking that on, and thank you for rebuilding that relationship, because you knew it was pretty fractured. So, thank you. Um, Council Ripley.
Hey. I think the first thing, next week, uh, next month, I'll put some Vaseline or some hand lotion on my hands, so the screen will recognize when I touch the screen. Uh, the only thing I have with the weather changing. Let's get out there, walk around. I, I walk every day with my dogs and I'm always walking somewhere, and. Every time I walk around town, I mean, we meet really incredible people. This is, this is a great place to live. Some reason we can't ever seem to get along. But if we get out and really meet people, you'd be blown away about the quality of people in this town, and it's something to really be proud of. You know, there's been times where they said the fire station, people use it for a stepping stone. And that's a, that's an incredible thing, when people actually move into Gladstone to join a volunteer group, cause they end up getting jobs out of it. And instead of looking at things as stepping stones, we need to be patting ourselves on the back and say, we got a great community here. So, that's all I have to say. And. I'll leave you there.
Council Hartman.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to give a shout out to everyone within our school district. For all of the hard work that they have done over the past several months to keep our kids in school. Um, we have not gone to virtual learning, which I think is a big, big success. I, every single person, um, has jumped in to be a substitute, um, and has really filled in wherever they needed. Uh, with that being said, I wanna share that, um, through a district sponsorship, they are looking for more substitutes. So they have a sponsorship that is a temporary teaching license and that can be obtained without a college degree. And they're needed, um, they're in need of substitutes for kitchen staff, instructional assistants, secretaries, and custodial jobs. So you can visit the district website for more information on how to apply if anyone, um, is looking to pick up some side work. But I just want everyone to know that, you know, with some closures that have happened all around the Portland metro region and, and other areas. They have just done a phenomenal job, um, with, with, um, with pitching in and making sure that our kids can stay in school. And with that, I also just wanna wish a happy Black History Month. Um, just not to promote another city, but the Legacy Biggo. Uh, library, uh, has put on a really awesome passport system that's open to anyone. You don't have to be registered like we go. But, um, for additional information, depending on your age and whatever you're looking to learn, they've got some, uh, really aw- awesome partnerships and books. And, and all of those things for continued learning, so, thanks, that's all I got. Have a good night.
All right, um, as I always say, the food pantry is open from three to six on Thursdays at the Hillside Christian Fellowship Church on Glen Echo. Where in the portables in the back. Um, we're always looking for volunteers and donations, and I wanna thank everybody that's dropped off food. Um, we've been, it's been amazing over the holidays and it continues. The fire department twine food drive keeps, keep dropping off food. Which is amazing. Um, the pickleball club just gave us five hundred dollars cash and a whole bunch of food. And Miss B's second grade class chose our food pantry for their social studies project, and they dropped off four hundred ninety-eight pounds of food. And I know that because I helped put it all away. Um, we're now reaching about eighty families a week, and that number is growing, and part of that is still the homebound seniors. That pro- that project, that program is still going forward. Um, our need is still huge. If there's anybody that would like to volunteer, let me know and I'll connect you, and then if you wanna drop anything off. I'm there with the prep crew on Wednesdays from two to usually four o'clock, so we would love to have your donations. Um, Clackamas County Coordinating Committee, C four, the meetings are becoming quite lively, and it all revolves around the I two five tolling issue. Um, we submitted a letter to the Oregon Transportation Commission, the O T C. Outlining our concerns, and it was basically dismissed. It was sent to a six-level-down project manager with. ODOT, and they didn't address any of our concerns. Um, we have a major, major concern over the lack of information that we're getting. There's constant changes and amendments that we are not getting any information to support it, and we're getting it last minute, literally. Um, and also the inability for folks to actually weigh in on this project is very concerning, but what's good is that we now have regional alignment. Everybody is on the same board, is on the same page as we are here in Clackamas County, including Metro. And we are gonna be pushing hard to make sure that our concerns are heard, and please let everybody know, weigh in on this. Because the more voices, the more we're gonna be heard. This is so critical to our city and for our region. Um, the legislative short session has begun, and where it's usually just house cleaning, um, that's not the case this year. There's, um, four hundred million dollars in affordable housing dollars to be allocated, which is exciting. There's education fixes, public safety with an emphasis on violent crime. Two hundred million dollars for workforce development. They're addressing behavioral health issues. There's a hundred mi- hundred million dollar, dollars in childcare support programming. Thirty-eight million for small businesses, a total of one point five to two billion dollars are on the table right now, which is exciting. So it's on day three, which was last week when we had our, our C four meeting. Day three, they already introduced two hundred and sixty-one bills in three days. It's pretty crazy. And there's a bunch of hearings that are in progress right now. Um, the climate action plan is moving forward, but they haven't had a meeting since November. There's a concern that the meetings are really being rushed, and that instead of focusing on milestones that can be reached now. They're only focusing on twenty fifty, so that's something that C four is gonna be bringing up, and hopefully we can get, get some baby steps that can be reached. And not have to wait till twenty fifty. Um, the supportive housing services fund, which is managed by Metro. It's been slow in coming, but we feel that it's gonna, the money's gonna start ramping up this spring. Um, and finally, all of the I G As have been signed. You know, how many years has this been? Three years? Yeah, they're finally signed. Um, and I would, last, I'd like to thank all the groups in Gladstone that support our city in some way. Without you, we wouldn't be this wonderful small town that we all love. Baseball, soccer, softball, football, basketball, pickleball, and I know there's more. These people engage our children, our toddlers, all the way to, to senior citizens and everybody in between. They provide the exercise, and I think more importantly, they provide those connections that people are really missing right now. Um, the food pantry supports everybody. We're feeding people. The ones that don't know where their next meal's coming from in some instances, it breaks your heart. And we're also a resource for social services, which is really nice. Um, the parks group that advocates for and takes care of our open spaces that we all know are critical to our community. The library supporters that are spreading the love of learning. We, we saw the fruition of that in our new library that's coming. Um, the historical society, which I call the hysterical society, for their enthusiasm and stewardship of what our city is. The Rotary and Kiwanis for bringing people together, and these people are selfless, they're supportive, and they're kind. And I know there's so many others, and we would love to hear from you and see if there's ways that we can support the efforts. Um, the reason I'm saying this is because I recent, just within the last couple of weeks, I had a senior citizen come to me. Who had lost their spouse about two months ago. They, they were home alone every single day, and they had no idea how they were gonna move forward. They'd been married for, I think it was sixty-two years, something like that. It was just amazing. So somehow this person got connected with the pickle cl- pickleball club, and now they're down there, every chance that they get. They're connecting, and I was told that they finally have a purpose, which is, was so amazing to hear. And I want everybody to know that you are so appreciated, all these people that do this for our community. And this is what it means to have a community that's connected and supports each other, and I hope that that's what we can do moving forward. That needs to be our mission. So, on that, I'm done. I would like to have someone make a motion to adjourn. I know somebody wants to adjourn.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion was made to adjourn by Counselor Tracy and seconded by Counselor Garland. Any other questions or concerns?
I was wondering, uh, really quick, do you have an update on the housing over on Webster Road timeline? You don't have to make it long, I was just wondering.
Not really, no.
Okay.
We're waiting to get.
That's a good answer.
It was tied to funding and now the funding is going to become available more. So I think we're going to see it speed up and it's way over budget. So we're still waiting to hear the the details on that. So I'll let it.
Okay.
All right, Tammy, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Ripley.
Yes.
Counselor Alexander.
Yes.
Counselor Tracy.
Yes.
Counselor Hartman.
Hi.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
Counselor Garland.
Yes.
Mayor Stempel.
Yes, amazing. We had such a huge agenda and we're done at eight fifty nine PM. Thank you, everybody. Have a great week.